We have called the meeting to order. If everybody will stand, we will now have the invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful for the beautiful day that we have today, and the ability to gather together as a commission, staff members, and community members and constituents. Father, bless us as we go through our meeting today, that our minds will be open, that we will recognize the issues, that we will contemplate those and make decisions that are pleasing unto Thee and in accordance with our constituents and those that we serve. Father, bless those first responders in our community, that they'll be watched over and protected, that they will have Thy hand in all that they do to protect them. We're indeed very grateful for the service that they provide our community. Father, bless our country, our state, and our county. We recognize and understand that all that we have comes from Thee, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Commissioner Torecchini?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to go into the regular meeting, and so I need an approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda of April 5, 2022.
All second.
Okay, I have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And I also want to note that Commissioner Sullivan is on the line at this time. He's attending virtually. So next, we will go to the consent agenda, and I'm going to go through those before we have the motion and the approval. Number one, consideration of approval for regular meeting minutes of March 15, 2022. Number two, consideration of approval FY '22 budget adjustment. Number nine, resolution number 2122-56. Number three, consideration for award of proposal number 2122-15, engineering consulting services for Bridge 8118, the five-mile bridge on County Road 4450 to AEO COM of Albuquerque, New Mexico. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I've moved to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a first and a second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Then we'll go on to new business, and we'll start with a presentation from Ms. Hopkins Byers. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I have a few handouts for you, so you can follow along with the presentation. In your packet, you have a copy of my presentation. A copy of my presentation, also a little brochure about the farm that we have been distributing. We've also created a self-guided tour if you want to go out on your own. And then I have a letter from New Mexico State University about our budget, but there's no requests in it, so it's just a standard letter. This is the annual report of the San Juan County Cooperative Extension Service. I want to do a quick review of what we've been doing for the last year and a little update about our office. So, hi Devon.
Sorry, I'm having audio issues here. Is that working?
While he's doing that, one of the things I wanted to do is introduce two of our newest staff members. We are fully staffed for the first time in a very, very long time. So I would like to introduce our new 4-H family and consumer science agent, Ms. Augusta Alm. Augusta, if you'll stand up and tell us a little bit about yourself.
You may have her come up to do that.
Oh, come on up.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Augusta Alm. I saw a few of you guys this morning. I am originally from Farmington, grew up around New Mexico, went to school down in Las Cruces at New Mexico State University, then got my master's at Colorado State University. I spent some time with Colorado Extension, and then I had the wonderful opportunity for living and working on the Navajo Nation in Newcomb. I still am very active with Newcomb High School, Newcomb Middle School, and their ag program, and also their wrestling program. I'm one of their wrestling coaches. And now I am here in Aztec with the San Juan County 4-H program, and we are doing some really amazing stuff. Not only do we have our traditional 4-H FCS things like cooking, canning, family consumer science, and consumer decision-making, but we also are getting very excited about our mental health programming. So I am certified to teach QPR, which is a question persuade refer, and that's for mental health first aid. And so if anyone in the community is looking to have that in their organization, please let me know, and I can provide that.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
We are very excited to have Augusta. She's been on with us since November. She also forgot to mention she was a state 4-H president and secretary before she moved on to New Mexico State University. So our number-one qualification for 4-H agents is that they bleed grain, and Augusta very much so does that. The other new staff member I'd like to introduce is Andrew Foster. Andrew just joined us two weeks ago. He is our new project manager for the Growing Forward Farm. So Andrew, if you want to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself?
Good afternoon, and it's an honor to be here. I am Andrew Foster. I'm an Army veteran. I graduated with a BA at Fort Lewis College in Environmental Studies. It's my absolute pleasure and honor to help direct Growing Forward Farm into a wonderful steward of the community to continue to develop our agricultural practices. And also, if any of you ever see me out on the track, anyone, if you see me out on the farm, feel free to pull me inside and ask me questions. I love to talk about horticulture, gardening, soil health, all of the above. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Maybe Devon has figured out some technical issues? Okay, we'll just go ahead and continue on, because you all have the printed presentation. Also in our staffs, we still have Rick Griffiths as our family and consumer science agent. Zain Webster is our 4-H agriculture agent and focuses on our livestock programs. We also have another grant-funded position, Wes Medlock oversees our New Farmer Network Grant Program. We still have Katrina Upton. She is our ICANN educator, and she's funded through the food stamp SNAP education program and teaches our nutrition classes. And we have our administrative assistants, Luana Lynch and Shania Bagay. So just as a reminder, the mission of extension is to disseminate and encourage the application of research-based knowledge and leadership techniques to individuals, families, and communities. Cooperative extension programs are practical, problem-centered, and situation-based. The objective is to improve the quality of life for people of the state by bringing the university to the people. And our new motto is "Be Bold, Shape the Future." So they like to switch that up for us a little bit. So now I'll just quickly go through a little bit of a summary of each of our agent programs. Keep going, Devon, keep going. There we go. So for me, as the county program director, I administrate over the office and supervise our staff and work with you all on budgeting and situations such as flooding of administration buildings. As the agriculture agent, I focus on programs and issues that are directly affecting our farmers and ranchers, mainly brush and weed management, agriculture and food security, water and soil use and conservation, and I do a lot with community economic development. Go ahead, Devon. Some of the summaries of my work this year, I focused a lot on the farm project, and we are happy to say that we now have over $300,000 in funding that we received for the farm project, that we have written grants with a ton of community partners, as well as New Mexico State University. We hosted 18, or I hosted 18, community events on the farm, and we had over 300 volunteer members come out. When I work with brush and weed management, I trained nearly 100 pesticide applicators on brush and weed best practices. I wrote a grant with San Juan College that is called the Northwest New Mexico Growers' Market Alliance. We realized that all seven farmers' markets across the county were doing the same work separately and struggling, so we created an alliance and we wrote a grant to fund a part-time coordinator that helps organize all of the markets from Shiprock, Kirtland, Bloomfield, Farmington, the Downtown Makers Market in Farmington, and the mobile market with the San Juan College Harvest Food Hub. So we meet monthly, and we address challenges like markets that are not able to accept the food stamp and double-up food bucks program, and so we continue to work with that to grow our farmers' markets. We were excited when we got the notice from the Natural Resources Trustee that not only the county project for the boat ramp was funded, but also a permanent pavilion at the Farmington Growers Market where all of the vendors will be able to back their vehicles up. Imagine twinkly lights, a stage, bathrooms, a shed, all kinds of great things where we'll really have a permanent home for the Farmington Growers Market. Our long-term plan for the alliance is to work with, hopefully, some additional Gold King Mine funds and be able to create some pavilions just like that at all of our markets across Northwest New Mexico. I do a lot of work with an organization that we've created called Buy Fresh by Local Northwest New Mexico, and I've given you the second edition of our local food guide. We are in the process of writing the third edition, but we want it to be a directory and a place where all of our farmers' information and all of the local food efforts that we're doing are all in one place. I worked with Farmington Municipal Schools, and we created 5,000 seed kits and created a YouTube video for an Earth Day activity where all of the kids had an opportunity to plant cucumber seeds and eat cucumbers for lunch that were locally grown. I'm also graduating 13 new master gardeners in April, including one Carson Stark. So we're having a very good time with the agricultural program. Moving on to our 4-H summary, Zain Webster has been incredibly busy, really bouncing back. He was a single agent through most of the pandemic, learning his job, which was an incredible challenge. But we had five state champions in air rifle in our shooting sports program, as well as meat judging and horse bowl. We were also represented strongly at the national level and landed eighth in the nation for archery, and the top 10 finishes at both the National Western Stock Show and Arizona National in livestock judging. Zain has been very busy providing over 100 community service activities to better our community, and a group of folks just got back from Washington, D.C., and met with our elected officials and communicated with the New Mexico Department of Agriculture. Our 4-H rodeo program has had a 100% increase in enrollment over the last year, and he's focusing heavily on that. Our county council team is growing strong and doing more than ever, and we are doing even more on the farm with the 4-H program. Continuing with Zain's accomplishments, he said that across the board, our 4-H youth are thriving. Statistically, 4-H members are more likely to explore careers, work in diverse groups, and be able to speak in large groups. And what he finds the most neat is that they're more likely to give back to our community. Augusta has been with us a short time, but in her summary, she has been doing weekly sewing workshops and really bringing in a lot of new community members and volunteer program leaders. She hosted her first day camp and 4-H carnival the last few weeks, and really got a lot of the clubs that have not been able to participate over the last few years to reengage. She's also been working with the Navajo Nation for Native American College Resource and Community to develop a weaving program with Navajo Technical Institute. And also our Native American Sustainability Ag Project through New Mexico State University. As Augusta mentioned, she is now fully certified to teach QPR, suicide prevention, and she's very passionate about partnering with SUU here at the county and developing those programs. And there are some other statistics that she has there. Rick Griffiths has also been very busy. He works a lot on the national level with the Emergency Disaster Extension Network, as well as serving as the regional chair for the Western Region Family and Consumer Science Association. He is ramping up his spring program series, focusing on home food safety management, stress management, and personal finance. Our ICANN educators are also finally able to get back out into the community and do more than virtual programming. Our New Farmer Network program is led by Wes Medlock, and his job is to connect land owners in San Juan County that maybe have available farmland with new and expanding farmers. Currently, he has 300 acres in the program, and we are actively seeking folks to come in and farm those lands. He had a new farmer training program that had over 30 participants through the month of March, and he has created a new farmer incubator at the Growing Forward Farm, and we're looking forward to having six new incubators this year learning to grow out on the farm. Wes will wrap up his grant this fall, and unfortunately, we don't have funding to keep him. Now moving on to the accomplishments of Growing Forward Farm, we came up with this phenomenal logo that's really a partnership between San Juan County and New Mexico State University, but really, our goal is to just become a big community resource and an outdoor agricultural classroom for the community. As you can see in the brochure, there are all of our key partners and funding sources that we received this year, and goals for 2022 include, we're going to be busing 4,000 fourth graders out to the farm this fall. Every fourth grade kid, we're hoping, in San Juan County has an opportunity to come and get their hands in the dirt to learn about the legacy of orchards in San Juan. Ready to put in 50 fruit trees, including 24 heritage variety trees from the Monizuma Orchard Restoration Project that were thought to once be lost in our community. A lot of these varieties come from 100-year-old apple trees. So we invite you to come take a tour of the farm or the extension office whenever you are available. I thank you for allowing us to do this summary, and I can stand for any questions you may have.
Well, thank you very much. That's a lot of work that you put into this, so thank you for that. And I'm interested, and once the kids have gone through your farm, you were talking about it last fall, how that goes and what type of feedback you get from these kiddos.
We'll absolutely come back and present on that.
Yeah. And then on the QPR suicide prevention training, who is that for? Who does that reach?
Thank you. So QPR is the equivalent of what we're calling CPR, but for mental health. So QPR is meant for the everyday person. We want to get as many individuals across New Mexico to get certified. We actually have a grant with NMSU and with the USDA Border Patrol to help us fund trainings to get as many people as possible trained in QPR. So it's for anyone. We have different programs for Hispanic, Latino, Native, multiple different tribes. We have programming for youth and adults, so we can make the program specific to the audience.
And how long is the training?
So a gatekeeper training is about 90 minutes long, and we can do it both virtually or in person.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you, if it was virtually, so. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions?
I have one. Who are the 4-H leaders in the Shiprock area? Are there any?
Yes, we have multiple 4-H leaders in the Shiprock area. I think we probably have four or five clubs that are active on the reservation. I can definitely get you that information.
I would like that.
We don't have, we no longer have a 4-H agent position located in Shiprock, so we have seen a bit of a decline, and the pandemic has really taken a big toll on these groups that weren't able to meet during the pandemic. So we're still working on building those back, but we still have a really strong representation in the Shiprock and Navajo Nation areas.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. If not, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda is consideration of approval to serve as fiscal agent for the San Juan River Dene Water Users Capital Outlay Funding, Catherine Jim of the Dene Water Users interim CEO. Pardon?
If I could interrupt, I can't, we're not streaming the audio online right now on WebEx or YouTube, and I have no idea how to fix it at this point. I don't know if we can record this and use that as the record, but I have no idea.
Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, I believe that we can just record it. It is live to the people who are present here, and we're no longer in COVID conditions. So as a result, we don't have a duty to, we only have one Commissioner appearing through WebEx, so I believe you can go forward with the meeting.
Okay, and do we have Commissioner Sullivan?
Commissioner Sullivan was on my phone, and I've just lost him, so I hacked him via speaker, so I'll try to get him back as well.
Okay, so we're good to go as far as open meetings?
I believe we are, yes, because we're not in the COVID situation right now.
Okay, all right. Good to go? All right, all right. Ms. Jim?
Good afternoon, Your Honor. My name is Catherine Jim, and I'm working right now as interim CEO after Mr. Martin Duncan retired last year. And...
Hello?
Hi, Commissioner. We're back in the meeting. Can you hear us okay?
I can now.
Okay, we're good to go. Go ahead.
He had requested in 2018 for some equipment, heavy, well, equipment for a tractor that we have in the lot, implements. And the purpose for requesting these equipments was what San Juan River Dene Water Users are doing is they're converting open irrigation ditches into underground pipeline, and after that's done, you know, where the earth has been moved and, you know, refix it with these implements with a tractor afterwards. And he had requested for these implements. There are six of them, and I am in the process of getting new coats, and so that's my reason for being here. What San Juan River Dene Water Users, they work with about 1,200 farmers from Upper Fruitland Chapter, Ninon Azad, San Juan Chapter, and then Tadagón, our whole back, Shiprock and Godea Chapters in those areas. And we're trying to revitalize farms and try to get more people to use their farm plots to, you know, to plant and harvest, and a lot of them, they kind of like move more towards working secular jobs. But a lot of them, they use their plot as a hobby, you know? There's just a few that contract their crops to local businesses like Prestin Corn or Alfafa, but the majority of them, they plant for family purpose, and then, of course, they sell like at the FLE markets. Underground pipeline is new to them, and so we want to also educate the farmers on how to use the pipeline. That's kind of the gist of my introduction.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Jim? Go ahead, Commissioner Torecchini.
Did you say you're buying six equipment?
Implements to attractor.
Oh, six implements to attractor?
Yeah, it's like plow, disc, cedar, to reset the areas where the earth was, the ground was destruct, was moved after construction.
Another question is, I know that in the past, I think, equipment was stolen, and if you have these farm implements, how are you going to guarantee that it's kept safe and not from theft?
The equipment was stolen back in 2012, something like that. After 2012, Mr. Duncan had chain link fences installed, and right now, there's locks at every gate. There's one, two, three, four, four gates that we lock on a daily basis, and he also had some cameras installed.
Are we providing insurance, or do you have insurance where you can handle the deductible should something happen?
The water users, they do have insurance with New Mexico Mutual.
And Madam Chairwoman, Commissioner Torecchini, we can require that in our lease that they maintain insurance as well.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, maybe for background, I know Ms. Jim's new to this position. We have served as fiscal agent before. This was a little unusual situation, and in the past, Mr. Duncan had asked the Commission in advance of making a capital outlay request to legislators, that he would like the county to serve as fiscal agent. In this scenario, though, we didn't become aware that, we were noted as fiscal agent by the Department of Finance and Administration until we received the severance tax bond questionnaires and noticed that funding for the Dene Water Users was placed under San Juan County in the amount of $100,000 for the capital outlay grant that they received. And so that ultimately triggered a back and forth. Mr. Cox had communication with DFA and the State Board of Finance. They'd like to find someone to be the fiscal agent. We certainly would be another eligible entity. The Navajo Nation could serve as fiscal agent, maybe the Shiprock Chapter as well. But Ms. Jim wanted to approach the Commission to see if you all would be willing to do that again, like it's been done in the past, for a backhoe, for a truck and trailer. And we, of course, have a lease agreement that we would put in place that would be suitable to the legal department, as well as any conditions in terms you'd like to have in there. But in essence, it would be, if you all agree to be fiscal agent, San Juan County would own the equipment, and we would lease it to the Dene Water Users. And previously, the lease agreement allowed for either party to terminate the agreement with 10 days' notice. So if there was misuse of the equipment, or if, you know, some reason that we might have a higher and greater need for it, we could call it back. That was a previous provision within the lease. So lots of ways in which we could craft this lease agreement if you all are willing to serve in that capacity as fiscal agent.
And you're aware of that?
Uh huh.
Oh, I'm curious, how come the Dene Water Users didn't use Navajo Nation or the Chapter?
I'm not sure. Mr. Duncan would have been, you know, he, I guess, they like the way we do it.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Torecchini, Mr. Duncan had shared his frustration with capital outlay that had been administered previously with the Navajo Nation. Procurement was difficult, and it was not a fast-moving process.
San Juan River Dene Water Users is a nonprofit organization. It's, we're not funded by the Navajo Nation or the Chapter. We're a nonprofit organization, and therefore, he, maybe the Navajo Nation didn't want to, I don't know. And I know he did approach them at one time, the Chapter, and it just didn't work out, the Shiprock Chapter.
You do have funding available as a nonprofit, is that correct?
No. What we have is the annual assessment, the annual assessment, and then we have grants that we use with BOR, Bureau of Reclamation. We apply for grants, and that's how we operate. The Navajo Nation does cost share. The Navajo Nation does cost share with purchasing of supplies and materials. The big pipes that you see in the yard by fleet management, the Navajo Nation purchased those pipes as a cost share to Bureau of Reclamation's grant. The Navajo Nation, the Department of Water Resources, they have a really hard time in attaining construction, so they've been using San Juan River Dene Water Users as a construction to install the pipelines, the irrigation ditches.
And the funding is still available for the pipeline and that's still ongoing?
Right now, we're waiting for audits, 2018. I did respond it and did corrective action to the 2018 audit and they're working on the 2019. As soon as the audit reports are out and then we submit that back to Bureau of Reclamation and also the Navajo Nation. So there's a pause right now.
Mr. Stark, if, if we're just the fiscal agent, we don't worry about the audit or anything, do we?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Totacini, you know, anytime you're, in this case, we would be owning the equipment and leasing it to the Dene Water users. So, you know, financially, there wouldn't be anything we'd be putting at risk per se with the Dene Water users, with the exception of if they mistreated the equipment, didn't take care of it, it was stolen. I mean, that's what we'd be putting at risk if they're not being good stewards of the equipment. If their organization were to go defunct, we would pull our equipment back. It's our equipment. So we could certainly make, make that work if, if they're struggling financially to make sure that the county equipment and the tax, you know, capital outlay dollars provided to, to the state of New Mexico are still going to be used for, for the intended purpose.
I know Representative Allison, you know, he says he gets all this money and he wants it to put to use. I wouldn't want to see it go back. So with that, I, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion because there's a lot of things that are, would protect us and cover us. So I'd like to make a motion to approve San Juan County as fiscal agent for the Dene Water Users.
That's second thought.
Do you have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration of approval of Resolution Number 2122-53 proclaiming the month of April as National County Government Day. Mr. Neely.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for your time. I come before you today to request the adoption of Resolution 2122-53 declaring the month of April National County Government Month in San Juan County. This year, the theme of National County Government Month is Thrive. Since 1887 and indeed before New Mexico statehood, the political subdivision of San Juan County has been providing services to the residents of the area, providing opportunities for residents to thrive. In 135 years, services offered have grown today to what is comprehensive public safety, providing for roads and bridges and numerous other services, which are all designed to build a stronger community. This includes San Juan County's Office of Emergency Management, which has been on the front lines of pandemic response for the last two years. We intend, as part of National County Government Month, to invite high schoolers from local school districts to the county complex in the coming weeks to learn more about the inner workings of local government and public safety. I believe Commissioner Lanier will be participating in that as well as Assessor, the County Assessor, Jimmy Voita, as well as the Sheriff, Shane Ferrari, and some others in our staff. And with that, we ask that you adopt Resolution 2122-53 declaring April as National County Government Month, and I'll stand for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Neely?
No, sounds great. I'd move to approve Resolution Number 2122-53.
I'll second that.
Do you have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone not in favor? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next on the number four, consideration of notice of intent to adopt San Juan County Ordinance Number 122, an ordinance approving an application for economic development project, extending the natural gas line to the San Juan County Industrial Park and authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement. Mr. Sawyer.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Ordinance Number 122 would approve application for ALITA, which is a local economic development project, to the New Mexico Economic Development Department for $1,820,000 to extend the natural gas pipeline to the San Juan County Industrial Park. The ordinance will also authorize execution of an intergovernmental agreement with New Mexico Economic Development Department to transfer the $1,820,000 to the county to pay for the project. So today, we, we request permission to publish a notice of intent to adopt Ordinance 122. And then if approval is given, the legal department will schedule the publication and place this item on the agenda for the May 3, 2022 meeting.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd like to note that, let me welcome her up, Lorraine Ruggles with New Mexico Economic Development Department is here. And certainly want to thank them for making this grant opportunity and a project a reality, as well as the Northwest New Mexico COG, Evan Williams, I know worked closely in helping us with the application. And so this is a, this is a big win for the industrial park, being able to provide that, you know, premier industrial manufacturing space up there, as well as the residents along Highway 170 up the La Plata Valley that would benefit from the extension of this natural gas line that could tie in now and get off of the higher-priced propane that they're paying today. So just wanted to recognize Lorraine and if you wanted to say a few words?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners, county leaders, and citizens as well. Thank you for having me here this evening or this early afternoon, late afternoon. I've been all over, I started in Gallup and now I'm here. But this is very exciting. Economic development is critical. The state of New Mexico fully supports this. We want to foster and have a positive impact for our local economic development projects. And we're very excited as to the type of businesses and jobs that this could create down in the future. Because as you know, those big buzzwords, you know, sustainability, resiliency, revitalization. So we're very happy and it was a delight to work with Mike through this. We've, we've gone back and forth quite a bit. But the $1.8 million, a little over 1.8, will be used primarily for the construction of the installation for the gas line. And we're anticipating a completion within two years, so let's get that done, guys. Also, I have, I have left some copies for all of you. This is what we call the Economic Development, the State's Toolbox Kit. It has a thorough summary of all our different programs and business resources. So when you're speaking with local businesses or companies looking to move here, relocate here, expand here, this is a great resource, but I sure hope you use me as well. Okay? Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Ruggles?
All right, I congratulate you.
Maybe it's for both of you. I have constituents there in the La Plata area and I think the residents who are now on butane, they're going to like this.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so it's wonderful that the money has come through and that this will be available. It makes life better. Thank you.
Yes, yes. All righty then, thank you again.
Thank you for your time. All right, so do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, motion to approve the adoption of San Juan County Ordinance, the intent to adopt San Juan County Ordinance Number 122.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Then next on the agenda is the consideration of adoption of amended San Juan County Ordinance Number 120, the Cannabis Regulation Ordinance. Mr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Commissioners, since we adopted the Cannabis Regulation Ordinance back in August of 2021, the Community Development Department has determined that some provisions of the ordinance need clarification and adjustment. Some of the, one of, some of the things that have happened is when we, when we enacted the ordinance, at that time, we believed that there would be a security fence around retail establishments, just like there were grows. It turned out they didn't do that. So one of the provisions that we're adding is in the event a portion of a cannabis establishment has no security fence, measurement of the 300-foot requirement will be made from the nearest point of any structure containing cannabis or the nearest point of a portion of the security fence that does exist, whichever is nearer. And I'm going to go through these just to point out the changes. The other would be the 300-foot separation requirement does not apply to the residence of the cannabis establishment owner if it's on an adjacent parcel. Number three, the amounts of required fees that have been removed from the ordinance so that they can be changed from time to time by the board without having to amend the ordinance every time. We've also eliminated some of the required personal information that we were requiring, like social security numbers, dates of birth, because that's just not necessary. Number five is a letter of approval will be issued initially and then the permit will be issued upon completion of the fire and building inspections. Initially, it was a preliminary permit and now it's just a letter of approval. And number six, any businesses operating in violation of the ordinance will be reported to the state Cannabis Control Division. So those are the changes. The Board of County Commissioners already approved a notice of intent to adopt at the March 15 meeting, and the notice was published in the Daily Times on Friday, March 18, 2022. So staff would request that the, the board adopt the amended San Juan County Ordinance Number 120.
Okay, do I have any questions or comments for Mr. Sawyer? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd move that we approve adoption of the amended and restated Ordinance Number 120.
Second. Do we have a first and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, next on the agenda is consideration of approval of Resolution Number 2122-55 opposing federal and state 30-by-30 initiatives until more information can be obtained regarding their effect on land ownership and usage in San Juan County. Mike Stark.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. At the March 1, 2022 meeting, Margaret Byfield with the American Stewards of Liberty, she's the executive director, provided a presentation to the County Commission on the 30-by-30 federal and New Mexico plans. Subsequently, at our last meeting, you all asked to have the New Mexico Cabinet Secretary of Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources, Sarah Kotrell Propst, who was joined by State Forester Laura McCarthy, provide a presentation to the Commission specific to the state plan. And so one of the things that, that came out of that presentation is that, you know, we have a large quantity of, of government-owned lands in San Juan County, both federal and state, and that the well-being, health, safety, welfare, economic condition and culture of the county and its businesses, as well as citizens, depend on these lands and their resources, and that they're, they're used for public right of access to these lands. And so, Madam Chair, you'd asked, as a result of the presentation from Ms. Propst, that there was some lack of specificity regarding definitions during that presentation, how the state plan would interact with the federal 30-by-30 plan. There was, you know, not really clear, clear plan there. And I think most importantly, what, what land uses would be restricted on state lands that would fall under the 30-by-30 plan, you know, citizens, it's really kind of ambigu, there's some ambiguity there relative to how that would work. And so you had asked that staff draft a resolution that says until more peer-reviewed scientific data is, is produced that alleviates citizens' concerns, the San Juan County Commission would oppose the 30-by-30 initiative until that additional information is provided. And so staff has provided a resolution for you all to consider and we would request your direction on how you would like to proceed with that, that draft document.
Okay, do we need to have this read or?
We certainly can, if you'd like. I'd be happy to do that if you'd like me to.
Okay. All right, if you would.
Okay, I'd be happy to. All right. Okay, this is San Juan County Resolution Number 21-22-55, opposing federal and state 30-by-30 initiatives until more information can be obtained regarding their effect on land ownership and usage in San Juan County. Whereas, San Juan County contains approximately 3.5 million acres of land, and whereas only 6.5% of land in San Juan County is held in private ownership, and whereas the federal government and the state of New Mexico own approximately 28% of the land within the county, and whereas the Navajo Nation and Yew Mountain Reservation consist of approximately 65% of the land in the county, and whereas 29% of New Mexico's undeveloped federal, state and private lands are managed by a federal or state agency, and whereas on January 27, 2021, President Joseph R. Biden Jr. issued an executive order establishing a national goal to conserve at least 30% of U.S. lands and fresh water and 30% of U.S. oceans areas by 2030 in an initiative commonly referred to as 30-by-30. Whereas Governor Michelle Lujan Grisham has issued Executive Order Number 21, or 2021-052 setting the goal of having at least 30% of all lands in New Mexico conserved by 2030 with an additional 20% designated as climate stabilization areas. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners invited American Stewards of Liberty Executive Director Margaret Byfield to provide a presentation on the federal and state 30-by-30 initiative. And where Ms. Byfield criticized the 30-by-30 initiative as a land grab by the federal government, which would require 729 million acres to be set aside for conservation, and Ms. Byfield warned that the 30% conservation goal was only the first step in a longer-term goal for the state and federal government to acquire even more land. And whereas, the Board of County Commissioners also invited New Mexico Energy, Minerals and Natural Resources Department Cabinet Secretary Sarah Kotrell Propst and State Forester Laura McCarthy to explain how the 30-by-30 initiative would be implemented in New Mexico and how it would affect San Juan County. And whereas Cabinet Secretary Kotrell Propst and State Forester McCarthy explained that the first steps in the New Mexico 30-by-30 initiative was to define what land should be included in the 30% of lands to be conserved in New Mexico and what should be defined as conservation. And whereas Cabinet Secretary Kotrell Propst and State Forester McCarthy admitted that New Mexico state government officials were at the beginning stages of complying with the governor's executive order and were still determining what lands will count towards meeting the 30% conservation goal and 20% climate stabilization area goal. And whereas, due to the large quantities of government-owned lands in San Juan County, the well-being, health, safety, welfare, economic condition and culture of the county, its businesses, its citizens depend on the manner in which these lands and their resources are used, as well as the public right of access to these lands. And whereas many of the San Juan County, San Juan County's businesses and its citizens are involved in or otherwise depend on industries that use federal lands and their resources, including the oil and gas industry, livestock grazing, mining and mineral development, recreational industries, hunting and other outdoor recreation. And whereas these industries are important components of the New Mexico economy and are major contributors to the economic and social well-being of San Juan County and its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico as follows. Number one, the dependence of county businesses and citizens on land usage and land ownership for their well-being, health, safety, welfare, economy and culture is vital, vitally important to San Juan County until more information, specifically peer-reviewed scientific data is produced that alleviates the board's... the board's concern, it must oppose the 30-by-30 initiatives. The board supports continued private ownership of land in the county, recognizing the nation's need for domestic sources of minerals, energy, timber, food, and fiber. The board also maintains that any private lands or other rights that are required to fulfill the 30-by-30 program's objectives should be acquired only from the willing landowners and for the payment of full and fair market value for all rights and interests acquired, and not through regulatory compulsion, and only after analyzing and considering the impacts of such land acquisitions on the well-being, health, safety, welfare, economy, and culture of San Juan County, its businesses, and its citizens. And number four, the board recognizes and supports the state of New Mexico's water rights system and other state laws and programs governing water rights and water use, and opposes any federal designation of waters and water courses within the county that would impair or restrict water diversions and uses authorized under New Mexico law, passed, approved, and adopted this fifth day of April, 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. So that kind of outlines what his, the concerns are about the vague ideas of 30-by-30 until things are made more clear until future date. Are there any comments or questions about this?
Madam Chair, I thought we were going to be neutral on this, but I guess there's a stand to oppose the 30-by-40. I know there was an article in the Daily Times that said the eminent domain will not be part of 30-by-30, and that this is not, you know, about acquiring land, it's like setting aside land for conservation, for more wildlife, to be, their habitat is protected for more areas for hunting and fishing. And I know that there's two counties, they came out and opposed it because a lot of it, their land is privately owned. Ours here is 65% of the land is Navajo Nation, it says Yew Mountain Reservations are in the area. And this American Stewards of Liberty means, sounds, but I don't know who's behind it. And they're throwing a word like a land grab. And I don't think the 30-by-30 initiative is to grab land, it's like to work with the land and protect it, like I said, for, because we're dealing with climate change, and we're loss of wildlife habitat, and I think that's what they're looking at. So it felt like, you know, there's that information that came from American stewards, and then on this other hand is the 30-by-30 campaign. But I thought we'd be more neutral. I wouldn't want us to, otherwise, it almost seems like it's a Republican-Democrat thing, and I kind of don't like that. Because I think the Navajo Nation, I haven't really heard what they're saying, but I did have constituents who came here, and they were opposed to, they liked the 30-by-40, and they were opposed to what the American Stewards of Liberty was stating in their argument, or in their presentation. So I guess if we say we want more information, we shouldn't take a stand right now, maybe till later. But I don't know if anybody's getting pressured to take a stand, because there's like, there's two counties in the state of New Mexico that have, like I said, they oppose the 30-by-30, but they have a lot of private land. And where's more, we have public land, trust land out here in San Juan County. So I don't know how you commissioners feel about this. But I like the presentation on the 30-by-30, and I think we shouldn't be swayed by this thing, and grab their land and take it away from you, you know? It's not that. It's land to be conserved for the future. Just my thoughts, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
One of my biggest issues was, is they couldn't even give us a definition of conservation. They said, oh, we'll define that in a year from now. And to just not be able to even say what their program is, provide definitions, to have inaction is to take action, in that it's going to keep moving forward. And until they provide what the program is, the definitions of the program, what lands are included, which lands aren't included, you know, I don't see, if we just sit idly, then that program moves forward, and they can define it as to whatever they want. And that's the issue that I have with this.
Okay. Madam Chair, I think the 30-by-30 campaign, they're recommending advisors, or they're getting people on board to determine that. The concern that you have, Commissioner Beckstead, is that there's all these minds that are going to come together, and they're going to decide, you know, how they want to look at it, and what their definitions are going to be. I mean, that's the problem with American English language, has many feelings to it. You can say one thing, and it means another, and makes it sound good, and yet it's not really there. Like, I always think of right-to-work. Right-to-work sounds good, but yet it's anti-union, and unions provide good wages, and safe, and working place, working environment for their workers, you know, they can't harass or intimidate their employees. But it's all, I guess, how you word it. So, but I think, again, I think we shouldn't take a stand right now. But, I mean, there's 33 counties, two have opposed it, and I think I read where some of the commissioners there are still kind of questioning it. So I don't know. I mean, I'd be outvoted. I'm the only Democrat here, so I don't know. But I don't know how you guys feel about it. But it sounds like you don't like 30-by-30.
Madam Chair. Yeah, it's pretty obvious that I don't like 30-by-30. My biggest issue is, the Biden administration brought this to light, and it's like they were trying to force it down our throats. There was no communication, there was no reach out to cities, counties, farmers, landowners, nobody got to participate. So they came up with this 30-by-30 project, and then they can't define it. They say, well, it's not a land grab, but we're going to tell you what you can do with your land. We're not going to take your water, but in the end, we may own your water rights. And so, you know, like Commissioner Beckstead said, by taking no action is almost worse than taking an action. I've talked to several counties, there's several other counties in the state that are looking at this at the same time. Madam Chair, and I was in the federal meeting, and I can tell you that the 33 counties, there was not very many that supported 30-by-30. There was a lot of questions about it. So my problem is not necessarily just a Democrat versus Republican thing, it's the lack of information, the lack of communication, and it's like, they have a toolbox, and it's this big, huge toolbox, and they're willing to use any tools to get the 30%. And if we don't start questioning this, at least questioning it, then we're just allowing them to use every tool in the toolbox. And so, my opposition to it is, we need to force them to define exactly their intentions with 30-by-30. With those other counties that have so much private property, that's where we're at a disadvantage. It's not 30% of the property that is already taken, it's a new 30%. So as of only having 6.5% private property in San Juan County, you're going to take another 30% of that, plus the 20% for the, what's it called, the conservation?
Climate control.
Climate control. So you take that, so now we're losing 50% of San Juan County property already. So it's almost backwards. The less private land we have, the more we have to lose. So that's kind of my take, Madam Chair.
And I think this puts the question in place that we're simply questioning what is going to happen, and what this means, especially, as was said, what lands will count toward meeting the 30% conservation goals, and then in addition, 20% climate stabilization area goals. That's a big chunk of land and water, so it's still very vague. There's uncertainty how this conservation will be done, and at the time that we were given the presentation, there's still no scientific proof about how the model will be implemented and controlled. So that's kind of some of the concerns that brings this forward.
Madam Chair, in the resolution, it says that you'll oppose it until more information can be obtained. Does this mean later on, you could possibly change your mind?
It's under, I think it brings it back into consideration of what information is put into place, and then next, what their next steps are. It's just not a vague, open statement that they're going to go forward, but we don't know what that means as far as our county.
Well, I was thinking, if there's this resolution like this, maybe I need a resolution that says, I oppose the American Stewards of Liberty until I get more information.
So...
Just to be fair, I mean, you guys are opposing it, and I'll oppose this one, and maybe the next meeting, I mean, of course, I'll be outvoted, but what the heck?
Madam Chair, I think you bring up a good point. If there's more information that comes out, and their definitions are sensible, and we can see that it is not a land grab, and we can see that they are not going to tell my District III constituents what to do with their land, then I think it's our responsibility to have an open vote. But until then, you know, by opposing this, I think it forces them to look and to talk to the farmers, and communicate better, and give us some answers, so we can make a decision. If we don't oppose it, then they're just going to do whatever they want.
That was already in their presentation that they wanted to do. So it's like, we need to wait until they do their final stuff?
But if you remember in their presentation, they also said they hadn't contacted anyone. They wouldn't even have came in and presented to us if you hadn't asked them to do it. I mean, it's almost like they don't really care what local governments are doing, what local farmers are doing. They didn't reach out to us, we reached out to them.
Well, I wish we could invite them back.
So they can tell us they don't have any definitions or any direction?
No, maybe by now, they probably have something.
They said it was going to take over a year.
Well, it's the same with this Liberty people, I mean, who's backing them up? What's their stance?
They're not the ones pushing the 30-by-30.
Well, I mean, they're anti-30-by-30.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve Resolution number 212255.
Okay, do I second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
We need to ask for further discussion.
Okay, any further discussion with this? Okay, hearing none, then I'll take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Then, as stated, the motion will carry. Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the next on the agenda, and that will be consideration of approval of resolution number 212254, a resolution opposing President Biden's 20-year ban on oil and gas development within a 10-mile radius of Chaco Cultural National Historical Park, and joining the Navajo Nation and Nogizzi, Pueblo Quintada, Warfino, Lake Valley, White Rock Chapters, and supporting a 5-mile radius. Mr. Stark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. On November 15, 2021, President Biden proposed a withdrawal of federal minerals from development for 20 years within a 10-mile radius of the existing Chaco Culture National Historic Park boundaries. The withdrawal equates to 351,500 acres of land. So specifically, this would not allow entry under the U.S. mining laws, and from leasing under the U.S. mineral leasing laws. Within your packet, you've got an information sheet that I've shared with you before. Commissioner Todechini and I, and Mr. Cox attended an information session hosted by the BLM up at San Juan College in regards to this matter. And so you can see the boundary area is shown on blue in the map below, and so in some cases, it's a 10-mile radius, and others, it's not, because they have to follow an allocate parts, separation of land. So the BLM is seeking comment on this proposed withdrawal and preparing an environmental assessment. They estimated at the meeting that this would be completed by late 2022. Now, at the meeting, it was noted that anyone wanting to provide comment would be able to do so until April 6. That would be tomorrow, but they did just recently, last week, extend the comment period by a month. So when we had prepared this item for your consideration, we were working under the original deadline of April 6, just so you know. So you might recall that the BLM was working on a resource management plan amendment, and that was to specifically deal with the new activities within the Manca Shale area, and the drilling that had taken place through the last eight to 10 years. And they wanted to be able to better manage those activities, and deal with certain areas within the county that needed to have setbacks from some of that activity. And specifically, when they were working through this process, the Resource Management Plan Amendment, supported at the time by the BLM, as well as the BIA, and this county commission a couple of years ago, supported Alternative C, which was the balanced approach. And that was trying to protect the environment and cultural resources, at the same time allow for responsible oil and gas development of the Manca Shale. And so, that Resource Management Plan Amendment fell victim to a change in administrations. They were working towards the end of that process, and trying to finish up public comment and finalize that amendment. That's still hanging in the balance as of today. The BLM has not moved forward with that process. But I thought it was important to note that within that plan of Alternative C, it essentially said there should be a 5-mile buffer. Now, it was actually a little less in some areas, but in all intents and purposes, it was a 5-mile buffer that was being proposed around the Chaco National Historic Park boundaries. So we were provided with some comment at the previous meeting from the Nogizzi Chapter President, who provided copies of the resolutions of the Nogizzi Chapter, Pueblo Quintada, Warfino, Lake Valley, White Rock, as well as the Navajo Nation, who were in favor of not a 10-mile buffer, but a 5-mile buffer. So, Madam Chair... So, Madam Chair, it's your direction. We prepared a resolution to try to capture some of those concerns, and we're presenting that and requesting your direction on Resolution Number 21-22-54.
Okay. Thank you. And so with that said, does anyone have any questions or comments about this?
Yeah, I'd be happy to read this one into the record, too. If you would.
Please do.
I might get a drink of water first.
All right.
A lot of reading tonight. Okay. San Juan County, New Mexico, Resolution Number 21-22-54, a resolution opposing President Biden's proposal of a 20-year ban on oil and gas development within a 10-mile radius of Chaco Culture National Historic Park and joining the Navajo Nation and the Giszi, and the Giszi, Pueblo, Quintada, Warfino, Lake Valley, and White Rock Chapters and supporting a five-mile radius. Whereas President Joseph R. Biden Jr. has proposed a 20-year ban on federal mineral leasing within a 10-mile radius of Chaco Culture National Historic Park for the, a total withdrawal of approximately 351,000 acres, and whereas despite the Biden administration's statement that the ban does not apply to individual Indian allotments or to minerals within the area owned by private state and tribal entities, and will not impose restrictions on other developments such as roads, water lines, transmission lines, or buildings, the mixture of property ownership between federal and non-federal land in the proposed ban makes it impossible for owners of individual Indian allotments to extract minerals since pipelines must cross federal lands where extraction would be banned to get to a latte land where extraction is not banned. And whereas the Bureau of Land Management and the Bureau of Indian Affairs were actively seeking comments from the public on alternatives for a Resource Management Plan Amendment, environmental impact statement for the Chaco Culture National Historical Park area, which alternatives included the 10-mile buffer and a five-mile buffer, however, the Biden administration's proposal indicates that a 20-year withdrawal of federal lands within 10 miles of Chaco Culture National Historic Park may be initiated without waiting for proper consultation and comment from affected parties. And whereas on January 23rd, 2020, the Navajo Nation Council withdrew its support of a 10-mile buffer surrounding Chaco Culture National Historic Park, instead improving language supporting a five-mile buffer that would provide additional protections to sacred cultural sites while still allowing Alatis to develop their mineral states beyond the five-mile buffer area. And whereas in a press release dated November 16th, 2021, the Navajo Nation Council reaffirmed its opposition to the Biden administration's proposal of the 20-year ban on oil and gas drilling on federal lands within a 10-mile radius of the Chaco Culture National Historic Park. And whereas the Eastern Agency Council of the Navajo Nation passed Resolution Number ENAC-12-backslash-2021-063, strongly opposing President Biden's proposal of a 20-year ban on oil and gas development of federal lands within a 10-mile radius of Chaco Culture National Historic Park on November 4th, 2021. And whereas the Giszi, Pueblo, Quintada, Warfino, Lake Valley, and White Rock Chapters passed resolutions in 2021, all of which stated opposition to the 10-mile buffer area but support of a five-mile buffer. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners supports the opinions of the Navajo Nation and affected chapters, and their concern for economic welfare of constituents who live in the area, who would be affected by the proposed withdrawal of federal lands for mineral development. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of San Juan County, New Mexico, strongly opposes President Biden's proposal of a 20-year ban on oil and gas development on federal lands within a 10-mile radius of Chaco Culture National Historic Park, passed, approved, and adopted this fifth day of April, 2022.
Okay. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, do you have any discussion or comment?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mr. Stark, do you have these resolutions by the Eastern Navajo Agency Council and those other chapters?
We do.
You have them?
Yes. Would you like copies?
Later, please.
Okay, you bet.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, having a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Then we'll move on to consideration of F23 congressionally directed spending request. Mr. Stark.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. You know, staff was recently notified by our federal delegation, so specifically Senator Heinrich, Senator Luhon, and Congresswoman Teresa Ledger-Fernandez, that they will be accepting appropriations requests for fiscal year 2023. Applications for this funding are due in a very short timeframe, April 11th for Senator Heinrich, April 13th for Congresswoman Teresa Ledger-Fernandez, and April 15th for Senator Luhon. Given the short notice and response window, we put together and convened a quick roundtable with our public safety agencies and the Public Works Department to try to look at what would be the best way to maximize potential receipt of these funds. Within your packet, you probably noticed the press release from Senator Heinrich and the different buckets of funding that would be available for this opportunity. And based upon the last round of funding, which you might all recall for, we, we applied for $1.25 million for right-of-way acquisition associated with the Pinion Hills project. It was, it was already a project that had received federal dollars, and so it made sense to try to apply for additional federal dollars. Of course, at the time, we had no idea that the state was looking at fully funding that project and has done so since, and so, but we just recently received a word that we had, were successful with that application. So it did take some time before we ultimately received the funding, and you have to be very careful with this in terms of, you know, you're applying for federal money, so it comes with all the federal, normal federal terms and conditions. And generally speaking, the sweet spot for a request, and you can see from the projects that Senator Heinrich published, of course, one of which we were recipient of, the, the funding request was from about $500,000 to 1.5 million. So we, we round tabled with, with our folks, and a good project was brought forth by the sheriff, and I believe the undersheriff is here, to look at resurfacing of the Criminal Justice Training Authority. That's the regional training authority, probably better known as Safety City, off the Twin Peaks Boulevard, and, and that track that they utilize is a 25-year track that they use for training. It's about a mile long. It's got some fairly large cracks in it that have been sealed by our Public Works Department, but if we're going to continue to use that as an expert training facility, it would definitely be in need of some, some permanent and full rehabilitation, as well as the shooting range is in need of some new turning targets. And so one of the other aspects of this funding is talking to Senator Heinrich's field rep is if you can find projects that are regionally supported, and the Criminal Justice Training Authority is used by all the local law enforcement agencies and other agencies that send folks up for training from across the state and regionally, that's always going to fare better with a request. And if you could provide multiple letters of support, which we have no doubt that those agencies and municipalities would provide us letters of support, we think that that would be an ideal request to submit for funding to rehabilitate the pavement at the Criminal Justice Training Authority and provide for some, for some new turning targets on the shooting range. So with that, I might turn to the undersherifers here and could maybe answer any more detailed questions you might have, or provide any gaps that were in my presentation relative to the need for these improvements.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of commission. Speaking of gaps, our, our driving tracks started out with many, many cracks, but now they've developed into like six-inch gaps. And while the, the city and county road departments are doing their best to maintain those, they tell us that it is structural and that it needs all torn out and redone, and that runs about $1.5 million. Aside from the four local police entities that use it, there are six or eight other agencies from northern New Mexico that, that utilize that for advanced and ongoing training as well, where they send cadets through our academy. So benefits many agencies through northern New Mexico. And then our turning target range operates off a pneumatic air system that's took to a computer, so the targets face away from you, and then for the duration of time, two seconds, five seconds, wherever that course fires faces you. That's failing, it's aged, and it's down probably about a quarter of the time and requiring costly repairs to, to get it back up. So, and that runs about $65,000. So the two projects together, if we could get this congressional funding, would knock out a huge project that otherwise we would be, face a deal with at some point. I stand for any questions you guys might have.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, who is your driver's ed teacher?
Oh, I don't remember his name, but he was wild.
Pretty sure it's an old guy, right?
An older guy.
With the mustache?
Is there any chance of, of using that for youth, a youth training, you know, what is it? Alive at 25?
You mean the driving track?
Right.
I would have to check, Farmington carries the insurance on that, I would have to check with them, but there might be provisions where that's prohibited. Okay, so I'm not certain. I can check and get back with you.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I might want to also note that the Safety City is owned by the City of Farmington through a R and P P lease via the BLM, and I did reach out to the city officials to make sure that if you all supported this request, that they, of course, would be supportive. And we, I also reached out to Senator Heinrich's field rep to make certain that there wouldn't be any restrictions on the use of funds on property that we don't own. He felt that given that we have a joint powers agreement between all the entities, as well as the potential, if necessary, for a temporary construction easement, that we would be able to accept the grant and make the improvements out there, and the City of Farmington would certainly welcome that, as well as the other agencies, because it is a, it is a regional training facility. So it's a project that has been on the radar for some time and, you know, keeps falling to the, to the back of the, of the list. And so it, given that that, it's the right, when you look at the funding that we have available here, that opportunity, that it's the, the right type of project supported by multiple agencies, we think it, it gives us the best chance to actually be successful with another congressionally-directed, you know, funding request. It is likely that, since we were funded last year, we may not be funded this year, so, but, but we don't want to, you know, have that preclude us from bringing to you a worthy project, submitting on it, and let's see how, how the application process goes. We, who knows, we may, we may catch lightning twice in two years here.
There's only one way to guarantee not getting funded.
Is not to apply.
That's right.
Madam Chair, do, do any of tribal law enforcement utilize?
They do. Shiprock Police Department used the driving track.
How about the youths, or the Patis, Hicarí?
I don't know that. Their, their entities weren't brought up, but it's, I don't know that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, any other question or comments? Okay, hearing none, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is report from the county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I just have one item to report on tonight, and then we'll have some other department heads follow up after my report. But I'd like to have Mr. Mestes and Mr. Logan, is he? Have them come up, you know, to, we've talked about COVID a lot, and the dedication and sacrifices that many of our department heads and elected officials and just all of our, our employees at San Juan County have given during these last two years, and it's been a lot. And so I'm happy to report today that we mentioned in staff meeting today, we have...
Yeah, this afternoon, the, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This afternoon, three patients with COVID in the hospital, but zero innovated.
Oh, okay, okay. It was zero as of this morning. There were zero COVID patients at the hospital and...
It's been two years in coming.
Yeah, and we've been trending well at the detention center, which is another big congregate care facility where we have zero patients, but, or zero COVID-positive detainees. So, but, but the real purpose for me to bring Mr. Mestes and Mr. Logan up here wasn't for them to give you a COVID report. It was to recognize them for their service to San Juan County, and if I didn't do it in an undercover manner like this, they probably wouldn't show up to be recognized. But I'm going to start off with Mr. Mestes as our emergency manager, and I think everybody here knows how much, how much work, time, effort, dedication he's put in, not just to this responding to COVID, but specifically COVID. I mean, I, I, going back two years, and I had him put together a list of, of accomplishments, which he didn't know was going to be used for this setting, but it's, it's a long list. And if you wanted me to read it into the record like a resolution, I'd be happy to. But I do want to point out a few things in here that, that, that he was instrumental in, and it was, without his leadership, all of our partner agencies and stakeholders in the community that relied on, on Mike for resources, for information at all hours of the day, and would, would help anybody who was, who was needing assistance, didn't matter where they were coming from or where in San Juan County they resided, he was there for them. And I just want to highlight a couple of things here. You know, planning in response to COVID-19 in San Juan County for, for, for over two years, and actually you put 2.3 years, and the reason being is you were tracking this December prior to COVID actually coming overseas and making its way into the United States, and then ultimately here to San Juan County. We had our first EOC planning meeting at San Juan Regional Medical Center, well in advance of the first COVID case in San Juan County. So we were, Mike was already coordinating all of the partners and stakeholders to bring together those folks here in San Juan County to make sure that everybody had timely information and trying to put plans in place and, and, you know, resources that we knew were going to be, going to be needed. Just a whole host of things from coordination of PPE shipments, NMDOT test kit pickup, McGee Park, we did vaccination events that Mike coordinated, coordination with all of the cities, the, the Army National Guard, the MAC group, testing for the college, the coordination of the FEMA bus to San Juan County. And I do want to share an email that I received from, to help me with this, Lily Perez, who's the deployed Northwest Task Force leader that you helped coordinate the vaccine bus with. Said, "Dear Mike and stakeholders, as the mobile vaccine mission wraps up, I can't ignore that San Juan County was very supportive and helpful on the way, on the mobile vaccine mission. We are glad of supporting the New Mexico Department of Health, and San Juan County was by far active in making this mission a success and stepped up supporting the COVID-19 mission in San Juan County. From all the counties we visited and venues, the San Juan County POCs were superb. In fact, I love the welcoming and warm feeling that was provided to us from the community. Mike Mestes, my respect to you, sir. Your leadership was outstanding as an emergency manager and with coordinating the area venues. Thanks for your organizational skills, sense of urgency, and accommodations to our schedule. Your outstanding customer service was a plus. It was a pleasure working with you and with San Juan County and the New Mexico Department of Health." So I couldn't think of someone who summarized better what Mike Mestes meant to our community during these last two-plus years, and certainly from the bottom of my heart, I'm extremely thankful for everything you did, Mike, because you made my job easier in making sure we could take care of our community in its greatest time of need. So my hat's off to you and kudos, and we want to present you with this award, and I don't know if you want to do this, have, present Mike his award?
Yes, let's do that.
And I'd like to recognize Mr. Logan as well.
Yes, definitely, and I want to say thank you, Mike. I mean, you've been impactful and professional, and whoever came along, asked you questions or resources were coming in, you figured out how to get everything going, and that was a huge task, so thank you very much.
Want to take a picture?
Yep.
Okay.
One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
So early on, we recognized that, you know, oftentimes when there are different emergencies in the county, you know, we lean on Mike not only for the external response, but the internal response. And it became quite clear that that wasn't going to be possible. He was going to be quite hooked up responding to our community. And so we met and tried to develop early on, or didn't try to, we did develop our internal COVID incident management team. We didn't have anybody to lead that charge, but Mr. Logan as our safety manager happily accepted, and we joke about this, the torch. And he carried it quite well in making sure that our employees received the information and resources that they needed during this pandemic. And he too provided me a list of accomplishments, and pretty significant on the things that Stuart did. Obviously, first and foremost, we had to develop policy internally and how we were going to manage COVID, how we're going to manage coordination with the state on reporting cases, and making sure that we're keeping employees safe. While we were continuing essential services to the community, we didn't have the option to shut down. We needed to be there for our citizens when they needed us most, and Stuart was a big part of that, as well as all of our employees. But when folks got sick and they needed information, who did they call at all hours of the night? They called Stuart to find out what were the next steps and how do they proceed. And so worked with getting employees, you know, set up for testing, getting employees set up for vaccines. You know, just similar to Mike, there was no time of the day where he didn't answer his phone and wasn't available for employees when they needed them. So I too want to say personally, Stuart, thank you for everything you've did and continue to do during these times. And I just wanted to make sure we recognized you as well for your contributions to San Juan County and to our employees.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you, Stuart.
I can see over the phone.
One, two, three, one, two, three.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report tonight. I know we have some other department heads that want to provide some additional information.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Stark, for doing that. You know, it's easy to kind of forget where we've been and what we've come through and the constant changes, constant, and the fear and just needing somebody there with the information. So thank you very much. Okay, next we have reports from the elected officials and department heads.
Madam Chair, my daughter qualified to run the Boston Marathon, and she's going to run it next, not this Saturday, the following Saturday. So I'll be gone so I can be babysitting my granddaughter. Well, my daughter runs. So hopefully she has good time, and it's going to be historical for our families.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Glad to see you. Sue Hodgman with Behavioral Health Services Department. One of the recommendations of the 2019 Behavioral Health Analysis that you all commissioned was to bring in a NAMI affiliate. And NAMI stands for National Alliance of Mental Health as a way to promote mental illness or mental health and to de-stigmatize the issue of mental illness. And the advocates of San Juan County have been very busy. I'd like to introduce the affiliate members of the NAMI affiliate of San Juan County. Come on in, folks. And they're going to tell you what they did and what NAMI does. Thank you. And we had more scheduled, but they were going to join us via Internet, and that didn't happen. Okay, thank you. You'll introduce yourselves.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you for having us today. My name is Gretchen Potter. I acted as chair of the Mental Health Task Force, and this was one of our agenda items to get this done. And so...
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Greg Allen. I'm the Executive Director of San Juan Safe Communities Initiative. And on this planning committee for our NAMI affiliate, which we just gained or garnered, correct, I was one of the steering committee reps. So basically, a little bit about NAMI, it's a grassroots organization that's nationally recognized. And here in New Mexico, there's always been like a strong NAMI organization, Albuquerque, Santa Fe. But thanks for Sue and some people she knew in Albuquerque, we were able to bring an affiliate here. And part of the step, and it was a long, arduous process, it wasn't easy by any means, through that kind of collective and meeting with the NAMI New Mexico group regularly, and I can't remember how long we've been meeting, but it's been, you know, through Zoom, because obviously they couldn't travel here every month. But we want to recognize those folks in NAMI New Mexico, which the Executive Director is Gabby Dietrich. And originally, we started with Betty Witten, and she was the past, she's currently the past president of NAMI New Mexico. But here locally, I got to look at my list, because first of all, we need to recognize the person who kind of acted as our chairperson was Jay Lee Driver, and I'll try to get my best Texas accent, Jali Driver. And of course, myself, and then Deb Burson, and then Melissa Maestas. Am I leaving anyone out? As far as members of this particular board. But I also need to point out, of course, Sue's involvement and Gretchen Potter's involvement as well, Terry Kennedy, and, oh, Kevin Burns with the Sheriff's Office. And I think I'm leaving someone out.
We have new members too.
Yes, we do have new members. But currently, we have six people, well, six people to act as facilitators who went through recent trainings. And so right now, we have people that are trained in kind of two areas of NAMI. And the first is kind of, well, it is an important part. It's, we call it connections, and it's kind of a peer-to-peer kind of philosophy. So we've got three people who have been trained to be able to facilitate that. And I think we have three in family-to-family. Jay Lee Driver, our chairperson, helps facilitate that. She's one of our facilitators, and I mentioned Deb Burson as well, among others. So it's kind of NAMI in a nutshell. Oh, we just recently have a member from Crown Point Navajo Tech. I cannot remember her name. I don't even want to try to remember. But anyway, so we just met, recently had her on a meeting. Again, we're hybrid meetings right now because to try to save people traveling, we meet through Zoom and face-to-face at San Juan Safe Communities Initiative. San Juan Safe Communities Initiative's role in this is kind of the housing area for it. I don't know the best, better way to say it. A place to have our facilitated meetings for the planning stages. And also, we carry the insurance for the meetings as well, as well as address, phone number, and so forth. Anything else?
You see any other questions?
You know, I appreciate that. My background in mental health, I understand what NAMI is, but there may be people that don't have a background in mental health. So why, just so people know, why is this such a big deal? Well, I mean, I understand, but why is this important?
So truly, the big deal of it is, like, you know, we mentioned it's a grassroots organization. So really, it's a volunteer base. So we've got these people who have volunteered to take time out of their own lives because they believe so strongly in helping folks who are dealing with mental illness or living with it day-to-day. So a lot of it comes from family members who kind of live that experience with their loved one, but it also comes from a place where there's individuals who have lived with that experience as well. And that's kind of the basis of it is, NAMI wants people with that lived experience meeting with folks who are currently dealing with that particular issue.
And it's a great resource, because there's not enough resources out there for people, especially in crisis or family-based or kids. So it's a great resource.
And if I may, Madam Chair, where also, NAMI is, well, they're there to advocate for individuals that don't have a voice to advocate for themselves. They also address public policy and work within the legislature to address bills and law that affect people with mental illness and help them to get the support that they need as well.
And that's important because years ago, Senator DeMenechy, there was a parity act that he helped get with mental health, and there was a disparity in how people were able to get access to care and reimbursement. So when you say policy and being involved at that level, that's important too.
Any other questions or comments?
Can I add real quick? I was at a training on Saturday, and the latest statistics for New Mexico and possibly the United States, and don't quote me, but they said that one in four Americans need mental health services, either for depression, anxiety, bipolar, other issues, and only one in nine actually get services.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And then if there's any questions, comments? If not, thank you for that.
Do you have the homeless?
Yes.
Thank you for all you do.
Uh-huh, thank you.
We've been busy with that list.
Okay, thank you.
So our next project is another recommendation for the Behavioral Health Gap Analysis was to look at the homelessness situation. And we've been meeting with members of the CHAP. I'm trying to think what CHAP stands for. I forget. Comprehensive Homelessness Assistance Program. They were the instigators and the creators of the GIP program, and they needed a new project, so they took us on. And we've been meeting with members of the CHAP group for about nine months now, and so this Homelessness Solutions Conference is an offshoot of that. It will happen next Tuesday, all day, at the Civic Center. Madam Commissioner Fortner has agreed to do the welcome for the group and will be having various work groups, bringing together providers of transitional programs, providers of housing programs, developers, funders, creators and creative thinkers of what we can do next to help the homeless situation and help everybody have adequate housing, because we know without adequate housing, we got nothing else. We all need, we all deserve a safe place to start from every day. So that's our, that's our goal, to do that. So I just wanted to let you know we're doing that next Tuesday.
Okay.
And I stand for questions. May not have answers, but I'll give it a try.
Okay. Is there any questions?
And this is in collaboration with San Juan United Way.
Sounds like you'll have more answers after the 12th.
That's what I'm banking on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then are there any other reports from department heads? Hello?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I just wanted to let you know that San Juan County is the proud recipient of the Family Friendly Business Award. This is presented, this board is presented from the Family Friendly New Mexico, and it's a nonprofit initiative that recognizes New Mexico businesses with family-friendly policies and works to promote family-friendly businesses. So we applied for this, and San Juan County is a gold-level recipient, which is good. The next highest level is a platinum, and we're going to work towards that. And that's our department's goal, to work towards that. So I just wanted to share with you that and our little certificate that we'll promote and hang up. So there's four categories that we were recognized in as being, as having family-friendly policies. And they're in the areas of paid leave, vacation sick, donated, and COVID leave, which we used during, for the past few years. Health support, healthcare and wellness, our medical plan. Work schedules, we have flexible work schedules and remote work schedules. Economic support, you know, training and education assistance for our employees, retirement and competitive wages. So again, this is just, just wanted to share this award with you and let you know that we're going to use this and promote and let our recruitment, let the community know that, hey, we're family-friendly business, and we have these benefits for you as well.
And remind me, where does this come from?
This comes from family, New Mexico Family Friendly, and it's a nonprofit initiative. And they've been, I'm going to say at least a few years, because the last time we received this award was in 2018, and I forgot my data there, but there, I'm going to say there is at least 50 businesses that participate in recognition, but it keeps building and building and building. And so a majority of the businesses that are recognized are like in the Bernaleo County area. So we're kind of one of the ones that are up in this area.
Okay, okay. And that's good in recruiting, like what you said.
Definitely, definitely.
That's a big plus.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other reports? So it looks like there's no other reports at this time?
We would need public comment.
Yeah. So at this time, then, comments and input from the general public, comments are accepted in person, limited to three minutes, to subjects that the commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No form of action will be taken at this meeting that relates to comments or input from the general public. So at this time, if anybody has any comments, you have three minutes, and you can come forward and identify yourself. And please give your name and where you're from.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, staff. Irvin Chavez from NagiZi. I live over in Bloomfield, though. Just wanted to introduce a couple of members of the group that came from southern San Juan County. One is Delora Jesus. Been very outspoken on this Chaco issue for at least the past six years. The other one is Andrew Charlie. Andrew is from Chaco Canyon, resides in that area. So I wanted you to know that people have traveled here to consider, for the consideration of resolutions. One other thing was, we're getting communications from the BLM and the BIA, whether they're going to be holding, I guess they're going to call it an official Indian consultation after everything is taken off, either on April 27th or 28th. And we got word it's going to be out at NagiZi Multi-Use Center. But then I got another email that says it's going to be in Farmington. So we're still, it's still up in the air. I'm not sure where it's going to be. But I know the Navajo Nation Council, and I'm pretty sure the President, Jonathan Nez will be present at that particular meeting. So just wanted to let the Commissioners know about that, and again, thank you for the consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. If there's any other public comments, please come forward now.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Jill Arion with the Bureau of Land Management, and we've heard from so many of our friends in the NAIVI area we've been working with for several years, and they've been great advocates for their communities. One thing I do want to clear up is that we do have a public meeting coming up. As we know, we had one in February. Sorry, Commissioner Tochini was there, County Manager Stark was there. We are going to have additional meetings. The next one will be April 27th. It is 2:00 to 7:00 PM, and this one will be at San Juan College. So this is our Farmington meeting. And so there's a separate government-to-government tribal consultation for the Navajo Nation that'll be happening on the 28th. And so I... And so I wanted to clarify that a little bit. So the open public meeting, April 27th, 2:00 to 7:00 PM. We will have a 15-minute presentation on what the Chaco Public Lands Withdrawal is. It'll be the same that we presented back in February. And then we'll open it up to receive oral comments. And we'd also like to note that there will be a Navajo translator available if there are community members that prefer to provide those comments in the Navajo language. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh-huh, go ahead.
I have one recommendation. I like those hearings, but when people start clapping and, you know, making noise, it turns like into a pep rally. And I think it should be respectfully where you let people talk without that in the background. So if people could refrain from that, I think that would be do really well.
Thank you. We'll definitely keep that in mind in how to have an orderly meeting. And we also wanna note that previously, we've tried to do these hybrid or at least have a virtual option. One thing that we've learned is that when we do these virtually, we may get 500 registrants, but only two of them are locally. And so this is very intentionally trying to reach our community members who may be impacted by any decisions that we're making. So do know that these will be in-person only. And we are also offering additional public meetings in Albuquerque on the 29th. And that'll be in the morning. It'll be at the Indian Training Center there in Albuquerque. But there's a very local option, so you don't have to travel to Albuquerque. And our information is online. Are you welcome to contact me, and I can provide you all the dates and locations for those. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Is there any other comments? Go ahead. Please identify yourself.
Hello, thank you for having us, Terry. I know your husband and his, you know, lawyer and all. Representing the family or my sister when she had an accident. So thank you for his service and, and you. And thank you guys for listening to us, Commissioners. My name is Delora Jesus, and I come from Naiyzi. And I'd just like to thank you all for voting and, you know, for our support. It's been a long, a long issue, or, I mean, you know, time, time, time-consuming. But I would like to appreciate what you do for us. And what I wanted to say too, but in all respect, is that I do have an issue. You know, I'm just voicing what San Juan Counties are saying are within our area. We having all these hearings, BLM, BIA, but we really don't know if they're really listening to the, the Latis that are being impacted. You know, I had asked BLM. I'm not, not saying, you know, I'm against them or anything. I appreciate all the work they do too within the leasing, when we, when our listings get approved for oil and gas. But I asked why the title was Saving Chaco Canyon. I said, where in the world does it state that us Navajo Latis are out to destroy the park? You know, I'm just saying, this is how I feel, and for others too. It's not the first time with the family receiving these resources that are on our allotments. You know, it's been a while. I can recall that my grandpa and my grandmother had received oil money since 1956, 57, but they're not here anymore. So this is an issue that I have, but, you know, I'm, I'm just voicing it. Are they really listening to the impacted people? And that's us Navajo Latis. They say that there was consultation taken, but there was not. So I really am thankful that you guys, you know, are supporting us. So that's, that's what I'm saying. But I do have an issue. Are they really listening to us? They have these comments, hearings, but we're hearing that they're coming from all sorts of places. You know, and we do respect our lands. We do respect Chaco Canyon, but there's always been a protection act. Nobody doesn't go in there, you know, and... But I just, I just wanted you guys to hear, you know, that how we feel. And no one hasn't really heard from us. So this is a big issue, and elderly's hardship-wise, they're afraid to lose this income. And there's always been drilling in Chaco Canyon way back in the early 70s and 80s. And, and now we're dealing with this issue. So I just wanted you to, you know, hear what I had to say. And thank you very much for all your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Okay, is there any other public comments?
Yate, Madam Chair, and members of the commission. Shee, Joseph Hernandez. Yine shee. Yate shee shee kee do shee shee de nee. Kuganisle, na kay beshes chee. Ashin datche chee, na kay beshenale. Toa koa, da na sha. I'm, I'm, I'm standing here proudly to know that Commissioner Torricini is my commissioner. You know, yeah. You know, I was disappointed earlier, but I know, you know, with, with her representation of not just my family, but my community. I'm a community organizer. I, I won a national award last year for the work I'm doing. I won the Dr. Espinaldo Jackson Solo Justice Award. My late mother passed away from COVID two years ago. She had no electricity. We, she had water, but we had, we had to bring it in, portable water. And this is just outside of Shiprock. You know, and so many relatives, so many people still live that way because of the complexity to get, you know, anything built, you know, on the Navajo Nation. 65% of the land in San Juan County, you know, is what we have left. You know, we didn't take anything away from the county. We've always been here, and will continue to be here. And, and, and that's something that, you know, teachings from, from my grandparents' teachings, you know, I learned in high school. You know, de nee isle, you know? And, and to be caretakers of, of what we have left. And over the weekend, I had an opportunity to look through this lens that measures gas. An optical gas image, OGI camera. And every single well site we went to was leaking methane. And, and it's, you know, and it's, and that's why I continue my work. That's why I continue to speak up, is because if we don't do nothing, then yes, Commissioner Back said, if we don't do nothing, then it means that we agree, you know? So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any comment? Okay, are there any other comments?
Good afternoon. I say, County Commissioners, for, let me to say a few things here. My name is Andy Charlie. I'm from Chaco Canyon. I lived there for all my life. I'm 80 years old. The time, this discussion about the Chaco Canyon has been recognized by the Environmental Protection. And this is only about 1.8%. They trying to save that, that area over there. I don't know why they didn't attack, attack Aztec Room, Mesa Verde. There's a lot of them, National Parks throughout the Navajo Nation. I don't know why they didn't count that. And I just don't understand why just around the Chaco Canyon. But I'm glad they, they protection what? And this is our land, the Navajo. That's where we, that's where we're coming from. We're not adoption. That's the reason why. And they talk about the cultures, resource and everything. I've been there for 40 years with the Park Service. I was one of the representative. The plan was, it started probably about 75 years ago. And why represent for the Park Service? There's a lot of issue. This is only about 1.8 or 1.4%, that's where we at. I don't know which way they, they had in it. But we understand about the counting and the state and all the other government agency have the land. There are BLM, Navajo Nation, BI, and all that, all mixed. And so I don't really understand what, exactly what they're trying to do. What's underground, and they don't want anything but the drill. I always think, I wonder what my people's gonna be depending on it in the future. Today, we get the benefit out of it. Just like Daniel said, we got hurt by him. He got, he gets the money from the old money. And he against it, and I don't, I don't understand. So we always been there, and I think we, we, the peoples, Navajo peoples, have deserved, have ever right. The reason why we suffer with everything beginning in history. There's a lot of people really trying to get, get rid of us. But we always win. We always back. That's the reason why we're, we're, Navajo people has a coat talker, the history. And we're always coming back. That's the reason why we have 1868 treaty with the federal government. So I don't know which were, they tried to put us. And, but we still, we still have every right. But whatever is the best you can do for us, I sure appreciate it. And I know San Juan County, they always trying to help us along the road. All I'm saying is, we need to change. We have a poor federal government in Washington, DC. We're in a bad spot. I don't know what happened. This is all I wanted to say, and I sure appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And sir, would you give me your name again? Would you identify yourself?
Andy Charlie.
Andy Charlie. Okay, thank you, Mr. Charlie.
Yeah, I spent 40 years with the National Park at Chaco.
Thank you. All right, are there any other comments? Okay, seen then at this time...
Madam Chair?
Uh-huh, go ahead.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss the County Manager's evaluation and for an update on redistricting litigation.
Okay.
Second, then?
Okay, have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I move that we go back into our regular meeting, and I would note that we did not discuss anything beyond the potential, the matters that we went into closed session for.
Okay. Do I have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, so if that, I'll go ahead and adjourn us.
Thank you.